Lexus building there in the, in the photograph as well as some of their vehicle inventory along in the, in the front of their property. Over to the right side or the east side of the development between the building and Interstate fifteen, there's two, actually there's four residential lots along this area. Lexus has acquired the middle two residential lots and is now seeking to demolish those two homes and construct vehicle inventory parking lot. With respect to the surrounding area, you can see directly to the south of the dealership, there is some apartments. Further to the south, there's some single-family dwellings and this is Eleventh Avenue. We'll be hearing from some of the neighbors in, in this area this evening and then you have some additional single-family dwellings further south there. Over on the eastern side, you have some residences as well as condos over on this area and then you have additional, whoops, additional apartment development over to the west of the Lexus dealership. This shows you the current general plan as well as the zoning for the site. The site as well as the, actually the four parcels to the east are all zone commercial already. So this is planned development commercial and all of these parcels along with the Lexus dealership have that zoning. And then you can see they're surrounded by various residential zones ranging from planned development residential with twenty-two units per acre to the west, eleven and a half units to the acre, to the south. And then we have pretty much half acre zoning when you get further south of the dealership and on the Eleventh Avenue properties. So the current dealership building is approximately three hundred and twenty-six thousand square feet. The facility includes auto sales, restaurants, there's some retail shops in there, and there's also outdoor events with amplified music up on the third floor deck. The proposed expansion over on these two parcels would total approximately zero point eight four acre and would allow them to park an additional approximately a hundred and forty new vehicles of inventory there. So this is the proposed expansion area on the eastern side of the building. This is the existing building over here. This is Tanglewood Lane on the, to the east. So the proposal would include this parking lot for the vehicle inventory as I mentioned. It also includes some screen wall along the front property line, about nine feet of landscaping between that wall and the sidewalk. And then there's additional screen walls provided along both side property lines where you have residential use that is essentially not conforming but remaining on those two properties. And then there's a large retaining wall right here that's incorporated into the screen wall so that these parking spaces actually sit anywhere from twelve to eighteen feet below the adjacent grade in this area here. Couple of sections looking at the site. So this top section will be looking west essentially from Tanglewood. This would be your street view of the facility after it's constructed. Very limited visibility of any of the inventory there. A lot of it would sit below this area as you can see in this section, which is essentially looking east from the wall of the existing dealership building towards Tanglewood. So you can see how far below street level a lot of this parking would be. So this is a gated entry that provides access into it. Approximately ten vehicle trips a day has a lot of tenants come over here to, to move inventory or bring inventory over. So there won't be any customers or anything of that nature. It's strictly for employees only to retrieve inventory or to bring inventory after it's been delivered to the primary dealership area. So we haven't received any public comments directly related to the proposed expansion. Some of the comments we've received and have been included in your packet or provided for you on the dais suggest delaying the proposed expansion until some of the unrelated noise issues from the events at the center are resolved. And so that's been presented to you on the dais as I mentioned. That's not part of staff's recommendation, but we can talk about that as we get further into the public comments. And then here's some additional sections again to show you, uh, street grade and then parking lot grade and how there's a difference. And this shows cars being delivered into the parking lot area which is roughly this level here versus the street level up here. And so with that, staff is recommending that the planning commission recommend to the city council that this proposed modification to the master development plan for Lexus Escondido as well as the new precise plan to bring these two formerly residential but zone commercial lots into the dealership that you recommend approval. That concludes staff's presentation. Are there available questions?
Thank you. Before we go any further, I just want to ask if any of the commissioners need to disclose anything about this?
No. Is anybody having questions to staff?
Mr. Martin, can you tell me where the vehicles will be offloaded when they come on the transportation trucks?
So the vehicles will be offloaded where they currently are on the dealership property itself. So there's no change to, to that. And then the lot attendants will drive them. Once they're detailed or prepared, the lot attendants will drive them out and around onto Tanglewood and into their vehicle inventory lot.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
Yes.
Martin, as far as drainage, is there any special drainage that's going to take place in that it's still over here?
Yes, so the drainage will be collected down in, in these areas here and here. Uh, that's all been reviewed with our engineering department. I mean, Mr. Tunnel can address that further.
Yeah, there currently is a kind of a brownage along the back of the existing dealership that the drainage goes into. And, uh, so this site will drain into that.
Thank you.
I have just one question too. As far as the, uh, the noise seems to be, had there been police calls or any type of open case code violations on the noise?
So there have been complaints over the past four years. The center does have a noise compliance plan that's been in place since two thousand and fourteen. Each year they provide the planning department with an annual noise compliance report. And so we have the reports for the last four years are provided in March of every year. And just going through these, these noise compliance complaints, we're seeing instances of several times a year when admittedly the noise allowances have been exceeded and what they've done to correct that situation. So it is something that is being monitored. We recognize that, uh, you know, there still have been instances where there have been issues and we're certainly willing to talk with the neighborhood about other opportunities to resolve those.
Thank you. At this time, I want to open the public hearing. With regard to the house that's on the north side of the area that's being, going to be leveled in, has that resident complained or made any statement about being orphaned from the neighborhood?
Uh, no. And to my understanding Lexus has made multiple offers to purchase that lot as well, but the gentleman is very much interested in staying there until he no longer can stay there, I suppose. And so there have been no instances that we're aware of where he's had issues with what's being proposed.
Okay, at this time, we're going to open the public hearing. I, I have speaker slips. I'm going to ask you to try to keep your comments to three minutes. Not going to set the timer, but like to move these along. First one is Rich Garcia. Can you turn that mic on?
Yeah, Rich Garcia with Martin Page Architecture. I'm Mr. Representative of Martin'sville. You're going to ask me a question about that? Obviously I favor the product.
If everybody would state their name for the record, I'd appreciate it.
It's Melinda Whitford and I live directly behind the Lexus dealership on Eleventh Avenue and we've lived there for three years. When we moved there, no one disclosed to us as they are supposed to in a real estate property questionnaire. Homeowners are supposed to actually disclose neighborhood nuisances. Now, a neighborhood nuisance is basically anything that allows us to not have quiet enjoyment of our property. And by all rights, that's the Lexus dealership at this point. Now, I could have sued, we could have sued these homeowners, but now what it does is now it puts all the liability on us. When we go to sell our property, we now have to disclose an extreme neighborhood nuisance because the Lexus dealership doesn't monitor their decibel level. They will let it go and let it go and they will even go beyond their music time if it suits them because that open air theater is a giant money maker for them. So what it does is it just allows them to do whatever they want until somebody complains and then they might get their hands slapped. Other cities, they will pull their liquor license. So other cities don't do it, but I don't believe that the monitoring for Lexus dealership is appropriate for our neighborhood. I think it's going to drive down our home values and especially for that poor old man who's going to have vacant lots next to him, but to me, these vacant lots are just going to open up more parking for them to allow for more venues and more bands. And my husband and I have sat on our back patio and listened to DJs as if they are in our backyard. And we are completely, there's a whole apartment development between us and the Lexus dealership. That's the distance between us. And we can still hear them loud and clear. We have come home at night with our doors and windows closed and been able to sing to the songs from the bands. And that's extreme. So, you know, as far as a homeowner is concerned, I don't think that they are responsible. I don't think they're responsible business to care about what's going on around the homeowners. I don't think whatever is in line to punish them for when they don't comply, you know, is working. And I just think that whatever it is that they're going to plant these lots for is really just going to open up for the big money maker which is that venue. So, you know, that's, um, I just, I believe that for our home prices and our neighborhood behind us, we care about it and you should care about it and Lexus dealership does not care about it. So I hope you take that into consideration.
Thank you.
Drew Davis, I'm the general manager of the center and I hope that what's being considered tonight is the merits of the project that we're proposing, but if you do have a question related to the noise, I'm happy to answer those.
Yes, I do. I mean, obviously there's been complaints in the past. What has either the Lexus dealer or Ventana, what have they done to try and help decrease these noise impacts on these events?
Sure. And we have a really strong desire to be a good neighbor and work to develop relationships with our neighbors and we want to be sensitive to their neighborhood homes. We've worked really hard and taken great expense and time and care to comply with the conditions of the approval of the noise ordinance. So we do have permanent noise monitoring terminals on the south and the east, excuse me, south and the west side. Those are collecting noise data twenty-four seven. We do run a report for every outdoor event that has to have provided sound. Each of those reports is included in an annual report that we turn into the planning department. For instance, in two thousand and eighteen, we had two events that had noise exceedances above the sixty-five decibel limit out of a hundred and sixty-four events. So that's like a ninety percent compliance. Do we want to be a hundred percent compliant? Absolutely. It's something that we work really hard at. Bands that don't comply are not invited back. They have to sign a contract before performing and they will comply with the noise monitoring. We have a hotline setup where neighbors would call if they're concerned about noise. That rings personally to me. I try to ask people on every time. I think most of the neighbors here would attest to the fact that we call them back pretty quickly and try to respond to those, even if we notify them to check the decibel levels and guard compliance. If you try to call and monitor whoever's putting on the event and ask them to reduce the volume. We also have email addresses where they've got a certain complaint that they don't want to use the hotline. So those conditions here, there's also working conditions that things we work so hard at complying. We realize just the nature of the topography that there are some impacts and we're doing our best to try to conduct business and knowing that if you have residential properties that are near the property that we have business against a little bit of a challenge, but we absolutely are following the commission of what the growth of the companies.
So all these people have your cell phone?
They have a Google voice number that rings to my cell phone. Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
John Miller, I'm that guy that listens to the noise when we talk about the corner So anyways, uh, first of all, I thought we were going to talk about the parking and so I'm going to address that first. I think it's actually, you know, it's going to be pretty nice to wait a week. So I talked to Drew a few times about it and he sent me the pictures and, uh, it's going to be an adjustment. Tanglewood is a lot of traffic, but I mean by an adjustment is, is that I don't know if any of you have been to Tanglewood, you know, with the traffic flow from the apartments and the, the streets and everything. But as long as transport is there on Tanglewood, that's good. Okay, let's go with the noise. On that petition, I basically had to sign a petition with a stipulation. He got a complaint and I called Drew and I said, Drew, we got a problem. And I, and I'm going to tell you my experience. Drew was sitting there and addressed my complaints, you know, and he's calling from his house. He's come up, actually come up in a van one time and called that house and noticed Drew, John, why don't you come up and listen? And he came up and it was loud and he turned it down. And I don't want to ban for the wrecked season. I'm talking to him on the phone. He told him to turn it down and they turned it back up and said he was going to pull the plug. They did it again. I, I didn't know, I'm not going to tell you, you're the ones that had in that seat the decibel level. I think the problem here is probably part, uh, the vendors aren't held accountable, you know? They're, they're going to do what they want to do, but you guys are the ones that set the decibel up. If you want to hear what it sounds like sometimes, which I wouldn't doubt people do, come to one of our houses and go into their phone. And then you guys decide that decibel level you set is, is really appropriate. It's, uh, I, I honestly believe in my heart that, that Drew does all he can to try to keep the, you know, the standard. But unfortunately, not everybody follows the rules. And I don't mean kidding necessarily. And I've complained, you know, I've complained many times through the years, though our foundation is, you know, face-to-face communication, it goes a long way. So I don't know if there's a solution to the, to the event thing. I really don't. And, uh, we're going to hear a lot of noises because of the glass windows are, are, you sound, uh, in common, the direction of the sound is great with the house. I don't know how that can be true. But as far as, uh, as far as the noise, I think, first of all, I think, uh, the vendors, you know, they're, they should have fun, you know? It should be held accountable. As far as the parking, I don't think they should, you know? And I know that I had a question that we just called about. I'm sure Matt, I think that that was today. You walked up in the drainage bitch, saying when you got up and you were talking about that, you know? Anyways, you do what you're going to do.
Thank you.
Can you hear me? Yeah. Okay, my name is Jesse Vingi and I created the maps that you're going to be looking at. I live, my family and I live at eighteen oh seven Esquire Glen and that's in Escondido. It's kind of below Del Lago High School. And the reason I created the maps for you is because I wanted you to see just how far the dis, the noise can travel from Ventana. The distance from our house to Ventana is a little over a half mile as a crow flies and there are times that we can actually hear the music. It was probably two or three years ago in the summer, my husband and I were in our room with our slider open and we, we heard the music and he goes, oh my gosh, that's Ventana. And we could lay there and listen to the music over a half mile away. I can only imagine what the people listen to that are adjacent to Ventana. And like the gentleman before said, perhaps you guys did allow for a certain decibel level within the permit that Ventana has, but it seems like it's just too loud. So despite what they do, it sounds like they're doing a lot, it's just not ever going to be enough. If you look at that map, that line, if you were to take it and imagine that it's a radius of a circle, make it a diameter and visualize that circle over that map, that's the parcel boundary for San Diego County. Look at all of the houses and residences that are potentially affected by the noise. There's, I didn't count them, but there's at least several hundred there. That's all.
Thank you, this is a great map.
Good evening, my name is Samantha Ote. I live directly behind Ventana's and I have done for seventeen years. I run a small business, a daycare during the week. I represent over thirty neighbors who have signed the petition. They are, I got every single person on our side of the street which is the side of Eleventh closest to Ventana's. And I also feel like I speak for the apartments of which I have been told there are hundreds. They did not get any public caring notice because they are renters, so they don't even get a say in any of this and they are right on the boundary. I also want to say that, so they just are not going to complain as you see in your recommendations. There is a history like that referred to, that there's four years of them. I alone have sent nineteen texts in a two-year period about the noise level to Greg. Greg, for those two years, we had his cell phone number, the hotline was not up and running very effectively. So Greg did respond almost every time and is the sweetest, just like Drew, in the last two years has responded to the new hotline. They are kind, they say they will turn them down, they answer from their homes, they say they will turn the speakers around and it just, the noise carries on at the same level. There's this disconnect between what we are hearing, asking for, and what they're trying to do or say they're trying to do. We seem to be not going forward at all. I have copies here of all the emails that my neighbor Terry Matson to the right of us has sent to the city planners, first Roseanne Cherry and now Adam Finestone. Adam has responded immediately and with goodwill and he is my only hope right now, quite honestly. I have all those copies. My neighbor Terry Matson met with Greg and Drew with a copy of the conditional youth permit in two thousand and seventeen and they were not even aware that they were in violation. They have the band facing south, which as you can imagine, huge bands facing right up the hill. They were not aware that this was not allowed and, and promised not to do it anymore. And my neighbor has pictures of them the very next month facing the band back up in that two thousand and seventeen when there has been endless texts, communication with the city, the hotline. We've really tried to follow the rules here. My neighbor Terry spent thousands putting twenty-two noise canceling windows. We cannot afford that, but he did and it didn't help sufficiently and he moved after thirty years. So when these recommendations, the big pact that I know was published on the seventh says, "All efforts will be made by the city to resolve disputes in the field and carry out or seek remedies as permitted," I'm hopeful, but when it says that most times there appears to be noise level compliance, well, you can hear from us, that's not our experience. And to date, the center has been responsive to complaints. They're responsive, but we're still in the same boat. So we have a hard time hoping and believing that things will change once we've set our peace yet again. So we have a bad job.
Thank you. How do you pronounce your name?
Good evening, my name is Earl Ote, teacher at Escondido, Escondido resident for over, probably Escondido, over eighteen years. A little disappointed because I've invited you to my restaurant, but he hasn't come. I want to address you regarding acceptable level of noise that we feel we have to endure from Ventana's. In particular, I'm concerned that in your planning document for the new CUP in section D, you allude to the existing mitigation monitoring and reporting program and to the fact that the planning division will verify that the project is in compliance with this program. Unfortunately, this existing program does not work for the residents of Escondido and we are asking you to make significant changes to it. I'd like to read to you from the Escondido municipal code, article twelve, noise abatement and control, section one seven two two six. Basically outlines four provisions and it says, "The city council of the city of Escondido finds and declares inadequately controlled noise presents a growing danger to the health and welfare of residents of the city of Escondido." There's a couple of other points. Point number four, every person is entitled to an environment in which the noise is not detrimental to his or her life, health, and enjoyment of property. It is further declared that the provisions and prohibitions hereinafter contained and enacted are in pursuant orbit for the purpose of securing and promoting the public health, comfort, convenience, safety, welfare, prosperity, weight weight, peace and quiet of the city of Escondido and its inhabitants. The current MMRP does not meet these requirements. Secondly, with regards to the sound monitors that Escondido Lexus has been sort of out there, we do not believe they accurately reflect the sound actually leaving a truck. Again, from the same municipal code, section one seven two two eight, sound level measurement. It says, point C, for outside measurements, the microphone shall be not less than four feet above the ground and at least four feet distant from walls or other large reflecting surfaces and shall not be protected from the effects of wind noises by the use, and shall be protected from the effects of wind noises by the use of appropriate windspraying, which strictly to the letter of the law, they are. But it also states, "And the location selected shall be at any point on the affected property." But it also states, "And the locations selected shall be at any point on the affected property." In other words, there is nothing preventing you from insisting that the sound monitors are placed four feet above the ground on the same level as the entertainment. We believe this will give everyone a far more accurate picture of the decibels currently leaving the entertainment area. In an email from Planning Commission staff to my wife on June the second, 2017, they stated, and I quote, "I agree that placing the noise meter at an appropriate height would solve the large majority of the issue." He goes on to state, and I quote again, "The plan, i.e. the existing CUP, may be modified from time to time to ensure compliance. Planning Commission, this is your time to insist on the changes of the new CUP." One of our biggest concerns is that we have felt powerless and unsupported. Once we've heard from Lexis that they actually had an occasion to see the decibel levels, but nothing happened, it felt like big business was going to always win out over the residents. An example, in an email to my wife on April the twelfth, 2017, Roseanne Cherry, previously with your department, stated that Drew from Lexis would be sampling the noise levels from various heights and destinations. Seriously, let's ask the inmates to lock the jail door at night. This needs to be done by an independent, professional audiologist who communicates the results to all parties. The current CUP is actually not worth the time and effort you're applying to main to Jordan if you have no way or no will to enforce it. It seems to me that the residents around Lexis, that the city is really only interested in Lexis's interest and not in ours. It's time to you to give the CUP some realty and to all Lexis residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Sean.
It's Feather, his light ass. Hey, John. Hi, I'm Sean Feather, I live at West Eleven and Talbot Center, and I've actually doubled up in the commission quite a bit over the years. I've lived in my house for a little over twenty-four years, built in 1948. It's on a peninsula, it's up high, a mid-slope above Lexis Dealerships. And I totally love that Lexis dealership right up in Ventana's there. I think it's great for the city, brings in revenue, which the city desperately needs to keep operating, and it brings up audio life. But the problem is, is they're not good neighbors, and I don't think they're putting a good effort into a sound payment. The gentleman who's representing the restaurants said that they're doing every effort, making amends, but Bill Martin said that there's been complaints for four years straight, and there's been no real improvement in the sound system. My house has thin walls, and the doors closed, windows are, you know, eight-inch plate glass. The sound of crowds right into my house, and I can hear every note, every song, and not just concerts, they have like some kind of auctions, or any kind of event where they have to provide sound, right on that hillside, just like it's a amphitheater. My suggestion would be, as part of this planning system, if they're going to invest the money in building that block, they, all they need to do is build some kind of a sound barrier, diverted sound barrier, like a stage with three sides, protecting the south, the east, and the west, and deflect all that noise to the north and east where there's no residents. And that would probably solve ninety-nine percent of all these complaints. So that would be my suggestion, is to hold them accountable. The gentleman that represented Ventana said that they're monitoring it, but I understand that their monitors are around level, that's thirteen people over the stages, so that sound just travels right over the top, and ninety-nine percent of the volume, it doesn't pick up. So, we guys can do some serious investigation into the, into the matter, because Lexis has been being a good neighbor, and if they're going to continue to expand, you know, I understand that the goal of the plan is to expand, you're taking residential neighborhood from years ago, converting to commercial property, which is okay, because I understand that you can do that, but you still have commercial businesses right against residential businesses that have been there long before the commercial business was. The school was there prior, the school didn't have any issue, whatever it seemed to have ever, about the kids, the alarms, the bells, or any, any kind of issue with the schools. But Lexis took over, and Lexis put a lot of money into buying this location, which is good for your big, your bottom line, but it isn't good for the entire neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Nicholas.
Good evening, my name is Nicholas Howler. I just purchased Terry Matson's house. He's very needy to learn to check and get away from the noise. So I found that out about a month before we moved in. We were talking in Matson's bedroom, which is, if you can reach the screen.
Which, which one?
Go back to the screen. So you see directly down to the page, there's a pool, and I asked him to go over that pool, and a clear shot down the bridgeway, there won't be a streetway. Go, oh, yeah, right there. We were talking, and music came on. I was like, what's the deal? But I'm already moving in, and he started moving out. You know, I've heard about this problem, but he did spend ten thousand dollars on thick glass and soundproofing, a lot of things to make, that were required. So just kind of a bummer. But reading the conditional use permit, you know, I think with some small modifications, putting the sound monitor, turning the stage properly, definitely solve a lot of these problems. And, you know, it's a very small drop of bug compared to the cost of the department. So should we sound their, resolve to stop all the noise?
Thank you. Pam Stahl.
Good evening, planning commissioners. My name is Pamela Stahl. My husband and I have lived in the neighborhood where Lexis is now located for forty-two Since twenty thousand, since 2014, in my opinion, Lexis Ventana has not been a very good neighbor to me and to many of my neighbors regarding noise. I, I want to ask you to deny the modification for the reasons that I will set out. But first, I want to give you a little history. How I wish we could go back to 2006. That was when the application for the Lexis dealership was approved, with Rule Number Twenty-Four, which states, "There shall be no outdoor public address or music system." Lexis property has adjacent to it on three sides, single-family and multifamily residences, east, west, and south. In the 2006 application, it stated that the proposed project would not diminish the quality of life standards of the general plan, such as creating excessive noise. And I want to note with some skepticism that in 2006, when the Lexis application was processed and approved, the rooftop desks were designated as garden patios with no planned use of space. So then we go to 2013, or 2014, when Lexis was granted a raise in the decibel level, a PA system, amplified music, and the ability to have events pretty much in time during their open hours. This has created an intolerable noise level in our neighborhood, and I must say that, in my opinion, the staff report under the heading of Areas of Controversy does not describe the, the situation accurately regarding Lexis's compliance. The modification should be denied until the following measures are enacted. Number one, ensure Ventana reposition their sound monitors to accurately reflect the decibel levels, leaving the entertainment area as certified by sound experts. Number two, ensure that should Ventana exceed the agreed-upon noise levels, they face serious and prompt consequences, such as a substantial monetary fine or possible loss of permit. And number three, ensure that Ventana, that if Ventana does not follow the parameters outlined in the current CUP, they should not be allowed to have outdoor entertainment, period. Please deny the modification. Thank you.
Thank you. Diane McPherson.
Good evening, I'm Diane McPherson. I live at corner eleven, Tanglewood, the northeast property. I understand that my property is within five of your, and that was one of the parameters that allows me to have a stronger say in what the noise level is and how it affects us. We have had multiple complaints, the hotline sometimes gets answered, sometimes gets answered, sometimes not. I've had people that were not through answer the phone, who said they couldn't do anything. I have left voicemail messages where no one answered. So I don't think that's particularly effective. I see in your planning commission notes, it says, "For each project for which the MMRP is required and adopted, full compliance with the adopted program for the project shall be a condition of approval of the project." So I too would ask that this permit be denied until full compliance is met. It also says in, in that same section, "To date, the center has been responsive to complaints," which is maybe sometimes yes, sometimes no, mostly no for me. I can be with my house, my windows and doors closed, sitting five feet from my TV, and all I can hear while they're having these events is them and not my TV. I don't think I should have to crank up the volume on my TV for that. And in your notes, it says, "At most times, there appears, at most times, there appears to be noise level complaints." Well, I don't think "at most times" is the same as "full compliance," and you'll probably agree with me. So until they meet full compliance, I think there are things that everyone else has spoken clearly about, what they might be able to do to achieve full compliance. Until they get full compliance, I don't think this should be ever. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer Volper.
Good evening, I'm Jennifer Volper, and I live at fifteen fifty-two Tanglewood Lane, right across the street from this proposed parking lot. I have four children, and it is a very scary street. It is not a safe street. There has been many accidents on that street. Many times, cars just zoom up and down that street, not aware that there's even people walking. There's not even a sidewalk area on that side of the street, which makes it difficult for anyone walking up and down that street. That's one thing. Another thing is, yes, the noise. With SPG, and you prices as high as they are, we don't run our AC very much during the summer. We like to have our windows open, but cannot when they are playing their music. It gets kind of stuffy and uncomfortable and still loud when I'm trying to get my children to sleep. It makes it impossible. Another thing, with the parking structure, where it is, right across from my house, that adds more cars going through that area, which means more traffic for my children to have to avoid while walking home from school. Another issue is, if there was a way to turn it around to where they use their own space on the inside for the driveway, instead of the main Tanglewood Street. Another issue... I can't think of what my other issue was at the moment, I apologize, a little nervous. I'm going to say that I concur fully with the neighbors around me that have previously spoken, and one hundred percent agree with the things that they have all said are all true. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the last slip I had. Does anybody else wish to speak on this matter? We are under close supervision, carrying. Open for initial discussion.
I have a question, Mr. Martin. Has code enforcement gotten involved in this noise issue?
Yeah, I, I don't know. Typically, noise is not a code enforcement issue, it's a police department issue. So I don't know that code enforcement has been directly involved.
And the only reason I'm asking is because there's a CUP involved in this. So, you know, I, I think that us as a commission and, and staff is heard, be loud and clear, that apparently there's a noise issue. And there's a CUP involved with this. I think it would be prudent before we impacted this particular item of force this evening that we make a recommendation to, that staff look into this via code enforcement, to see if there's a way to make sure that we can ensure that the CUP is being followed, as opposed to having that particular issue get involved with the issue this force this evening. So those are my comments.
At the beginning of the meeting, it seemed to me that some guidance was provided for us, that the noise issue is something that we have no say-so, but yet I hear from our neighbors, the neighbors for Ventana, that certainly seems like we have something to say about that.
What, let me, that, that's what our guidance was. However, in light of the fact that it is a CUP, which can be pulled, terminated, it's not compliant, I think we can talk about this.
All right. So certainly seems to me, by the comments of the neighbors, that they're certainly trying to be reasonable, for the most part, or a good portion of them spoke positively of the gentleman Drew, that he did answer, or not all the time, but, but answered, or the other people that answered. So it seems like something's trying to happen there positively. That's great. What I'm concerned about is what can we do to help the neighbors find relief over this? Because we can very easily just, okay, let's do it, and then, that's it. I think it's reasonable, seems to me at least, reasonable if in fact the mics are on the ground level. Yeah, it's just logical, that sound would be moving in a different way, why can't we put them up there? I think that's, unless there's something that staff can indicate why there would be a reason not to do that. But there was also mentioned that Planning Commission approved the decibel level. Is that correct? Did we do that? I mean, sure, that was before my time, but...
We, we have never had anything to do with it, at least since I moved in. Yeah, I don't know that you did either. I believe that both of the PEs for this, the original one in 2006 that established the dealership, and then the modification in 2013 that allowed the center to have amplified music events, I believe both of those went directly to the city council.
Okay, so, so we didn't, the commission didn't approve that. So I, I think that we should definitely require that the microphones be placed in an appropriate place where we can get accurate levels of reading of the noise. And I would encourage the neighbors to call the police department, it is too much, the police can very well sit across the street and go listen and make a determination and say, "Okay, this is really loud," and approach whoever they need to do that. So I think that it falls upon our responsibility to try to find relief, to do our best to find relief. find relief for this community.
I've got a question on terminology. Is there a conditional use permit for this music, or is it part of the master plan?
Yeah, technically, there is no conditional use permit. What established, again, the Lexus dealership was a master and precise development plan. And then in 2013, what established the allowance for music and live entertainment was a modification to that master plan. And then now today, you're looking at another modification to the master plan to allow the vehicle inventory law.
I agree, it sounds like there's a noise problem from it. It may or may not be in compliance with the master plan, but I don't see that the Planning Commission has any authority to enact anything here. We can hold hostage this application to build the parking lot as a condition, but I don't really believe we should hold it hostage, this development, in order to solve the other problem. I think the other problem needs solved, but I don't think it should be by denying the permit.
I'm gonna have to agree with there on that. Although I'm sensitive to the issue that all the neighbors are bringing up, I believe that the parking structure or parking area is going to be a completely different situation and should be handled separately. If there are issues that are continuing and moving forward, that should be handled in a completely different hearing or in a completely different manner than trying to hold it project as we put it. Some of the complaints concerned brought up was, you know, reducing more traffic, but in a way brought up to us and believed that it was just a BFP card that we're going to be driving in there and back and forth, but that's not an ongoing thing, that's something that we've been all day of air, that everything's got to be hard. I don't, again, I'm being sensitive to all of your complaints, I get that, it's a purpose today, and the sound is possible, it should be addressed in a different manner.
Here's the real challenge with this is, that parking lot and the gentleman John, who he left, he's actually sitting on the corner, that's the most least property I've ever seen. He's a second to that for us, which is, isn't what he asked for the unit. The parking lot is not relevant to the sound, it does have leverage for like, just to figure something out, they want that parking lot, that's what the neighbors should really go for. What we're hearing though today is to decide whether that parking lot should be there. But in reality, the city council, back when, whenever that date was, approved that it never came before the planning commission at either single time. Whether this gets voted up or down, it's gonna go back to the city council. And if the city council, the city could leave. And if it doesn't go, Lexus is gonna go to the city council at that point, because they're looking for their way to get what they need accomplished as well. So, I recommend that you stay vigilant and that you move forward through this process because whether it's up or down, it's gonna go back to where the commission actually has approved it originally. And that's what happened. There's other things in the city that have been approved or denied that neighbors have had the city council made it or not. So, I suggest you stay vigilant whether it's approved or not. But technically, we don't have the ability to vote on whether the sound is there or not as a commission, but we can do what we want as a commission, have a vote for the neighbors of the city.
I agree completely with what I said. Our task is to determine the best land use and best land use for that in a commercial lot would be a parking lot. Other than that, it's not a conditional use permit at this point. It's not for us to discuss the noise. However, I have to tell you, there's no question about the fact that there's excessive noise. And whether or not they respond to complaints is irrelevant, because there shouldn't be complaints. To even have to complain is more than you should have to put up with. This will go to the city council or not, Mr. Martin?
Yeah, automatically, it goes to the city council.
I guarantee to the Lexus dealer that you are not going to get anything, you cannot come to a satisfactory meeting with the neighbors. I think the suggestion of putting a barrier, I was even thinking originally about a glass barrier around the whole top, something that's gonna confine that music to the point where somebody living right across the property line from you is not bothered by the noise. It's up to us to determine whether or not that parking lot is proper use for that land and take a vote on it here in just a minute. However, what we do is just give guidance to the city council, and they are the ones that, if I was editing with a person, I would put quite a bit of money on the outcome if it can't be resolved as far as mitigating the noise level. So, with that, we are going to vote on whether or not the, this is staff recommendation as far as the land use going along.
I'd just like to move to approve PHD 18-0026 for the modifications that are posted.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Okay, let's take a hand vote, all the paper. Opposed. Two opposed, so the motion carries. The modification of a master development plan and new precise development plan, PHD 18-0026. Item G2, master and precise development plan and grading exemption, PHD 17-009. Does anybody have anything to disclose?
Good evening, commission. My name is Anne Dolmich, and this is item G2. It's PHD 17-0019, Grand Avenue Apartments at 1316 East Grand Avenue. And the project is a proposed master and precise development plan for a 15-unit apartment building, as well as a grading exemption for a fill slope or retaining wall. Just to go over the highlights of the project, as I said before, a master and precise development plan for an apartment building of 15 units. There would be three levels of residential units, five units per level, ranging from one bedroom, one bath, to three bedrooms and two baths. As you can see, the bulk of the units are two-bedroom, two-bath units. There would be a basement-level storage room containing storage lockers for private storage for the tenants, as well as a bicycle rack. Each unit would come with its own private balcony and in-unit laundry. And there'd be 26 parking spaces, 15 of which would be covered and 11 would be uncovered. And the grading exemption would be for a fill slope over 10 feet in height within 50 feet of property lines with an associated retaining wall. The slope is the north and northeast end of the property, and I will have an exhibit later that shows that. And it's necessary for a level building site, this is a slope property. And I have a diagram of the zoning and general plan designations and how they compare to the neighborhood. There is general commercial zoning in the area. You can see there's also multifamily zoning. The HP zone is our hospital professional zone, which actually does not exist anymore. Our zoning maps have not yet been updated to reflect that. We use our professional commercial zoning designation to determine allowed uses and development standards for those. So, the general plan and zoning designation for this property are general commercial. As you probably know, residential projects normally aren't compatible with commercial zoning. The site is located within the East Valley Parkway target area of the general plan. And this target area includes mixed-use residential overlay, which the site and the adjoining Walmart property fall under. Additionally, there is an East Valley Parkway area plan that governs this target area, and it allows for multifamily residential projects with CG zoning with approval of a planned development. So, this project proposes to combine this new apartment building with a neighboring Walmart property to form something called a horizontal mixed-use development. And horizontal simply means that you have residential and commercial uses in separate buildings instead of in combined buildings. And this is a map of that East Valley Parkway target area, which is defined by the bull line. And the hatched area on the west side of that target area is where the mixed-use overlay is located. And here is also an aerial view of the project site, as well as the Walmart site next to it. And I have an exhibit of the grading exemption area, that hatched area is the slope that requires the grading exemption. There's a retaining wall along the north property line and along the east property line and along the northern part of the west property line. And you can see there's an area up in the far right, upper right corner that's not hatched. The slope will extend into that area. This is an early exhibit that eventually the location of the retaining wall was modified slightly to push it more into that corner to account for a turnaround area in the parking lot for large vehicles. So, the slope does go pretty much all the way up to that corner. This diagram here on the left shows a profile view of the retaining wall at the north and east side of the property and the upper west side of the property. There will be planter blocks along the wall so that vines can be planted there for concealment of the wall to help soften the view from the north. Geogrid mesh, sorry, geogrid mesh will be applied to the fill in that area for extra stability under the parking lot and just inside the wall. And I have a site plan that includes the floor plan for the first level. It also includes a floor plan for the lower-level storage room. The second and third floors of residential units are pretty much exactly the same as this first floor. You can see there's five units in a row. There's the one-bedroom unit on the west side, three-bedroom unit on the east side, and then you've got the three-to-bedroom units in the middle. And some colored elevations, this is the south and the west elevation, mostly neutral tones and ranges of browns and tans. They do have accent colors, the kind of lime green color for the doors. And the north and the east side are similar. Landscape plans, we do have a variety of trees and smaller plantings along the Grand Avenue side, as well as along the west side of the property. As I mentioned before, that retaining wall along the north and the east side primarily will be planted with vines, both in the planter blocks on the wall and at the base of the wall. The project is exempt from SEQA per Section 15332 for infill development projects. The site has no value as habitat for threatened or endangered species. There's no traffic, air quality, water quality, or noise effects. And utilities or services needed either already exist or can be extended to the site. Staff's recommendation is that, I'm sorry, that should be, we recommend that Planning Commission recommend to city council that they approve PHD 17-0019 with the proposed findings and conditions of approval and authorize the issuance of the SEQA notice of exemption. And I'm available for questions.
Thank you. Is anybody questioning?
Thank you. How tall is that retaining wall next to the wall?
I'm sorry, what's that?
How tall is the retaining wall?
At the highest point, about 22 and a half feet, and the highest point is in that northeast corner.
And then the one facing Grand Avenue, how tall is that?
The one that's under the building, or that one, I believe, 11 and a half feet is the highest part, yeah.
I've got a couple of questions. In the staff report, and I think it's back under exhibit C, item number 5 under master development, or the master precise development plan, it's item number 5, it says that the project underwent design review on April 12, 2018. What body was that? Was that just staff review?
That was staff, staff level.
The other question I have is, looking at the parking requirements, it looks like it meets the parking requirements for the units themselves, but there is no guest parking.
That's true.
If somebody was gonna be a guest, where would they?
There is some street parking on Grand Avenue. It's a red curb basically from Harding Avenue, Harding Street, where you turn in to go to Walmart, pretty much up the hill to the western property, this western property line. But west of that, there are several areas that are not red curb, and I believe most of Ohio Avenue is also not a red curb, so there is some street parking.
Is there, well, you might be able to answer the question, but is there any red curbing from the eastern property line across the property?
Yeah, I believe it'd be all red across this project.
Right.
Okay. That was all the questions I have.
Yeah, I have two questions, if nobody else. The driveway into this project will be below the crest of the hill considerably below that.
I believe so, yeah.
Because I drive this every day, and I've seen numerous accidents because cars crest the hill and there's somebody stopped right on the other side. It's not a really good hill. I think that having the driveway far enough down is gonna allow plenty of visual, the ability to come in and out. The problem I have is with the median in the middle of Grand Avenue that goes from, all the way from the entrance to Walmart and it ends right over the hill, with a sign that says no U-turn, which might as well not be there, because people fly over the hill and come to a stop, and people get rear-ended, they make a U-turn to go the other way. I want to see a median all the way down there that prevents people from U-turning, and that should be there now even before this project goes in. But this is going to make the situation even worse, because to have to go around and come in makes people make an illegal U-turn there. So, is there anything, are we gonna address that anyway?
I don't know, we haven't addressed it so far.
I guess I'm not understanding, you want the median, because the median comes all the way up from, like I say, Walmart, some type of a curb that people would, they can't, the curb ends and then the U-turn around the end, even though there's a sign right at the end of the curb that says no U-turn.
By the Ohio.
Yes, if you're heading westbound on Grand Avenue, over the top of the hill, right?
Right.
At Ohio, just before Ohio is where that ends.
I have to say we can look at that.
Well, I, I would challenge you to go out there and go up the hill off Rose, drive, drive west, wait till there's some cars in front of you, and then watch what happens when you get right over the top of the hill. And it's not that they're turning across to go into the, to those complexes in there. They, two out of three, the last three times I've seen is two people have done nothing but U-turn to go the other way.
Yeah.
And it's, it's a real dangerous place for U-turn. I'm not saying that this project is responsible for that, but it's only going to make the situation worse because people leaving the driveway, they want to go eastbound, they either go down, and there's no U-turn at Ash, so they're going to have to pick a side street to turn around and go around on Valley Parkway, which is the logical and legal way to do it, but they're in a hurry, they're just going to sit around there and go the other way. So, anyway, that was my comment on that. Thank you. Does anybody else have other questions of staff?
With that, we will open the podium here. Gary Nguyen.
I'm, I'm civil engineer for the project. I can favor, have an answer any technical question. I defer to Mark Baker, the architect.
And he's next on the list.
Thank you.
Good evening. Mark Baker, architect for the project. Thank you very much for considering this issue. We have been working at this for quite a while, and we're very excited about the product we're proposing for this evening. We have worked extensively with many staff, man, engineering, fire, had multiple meetings to manage this work. It is an odd site, and the grading issue is, is just the nature of the beast because it does scope off quite dramatically from Grand Avenue all the way down to the backside of Walmart Parkway. So, in order to, in order to get this thing to be a usable lot, did require, it does require these tall retaining walls with cement board. And we've maximized the scope of the driveway down into the site to minimize the heights of the walls as much as possible, even though it is still stretched out to be twenty-two feet at the tallest point there. So, and we did look early on whether it was, we looked at mini storage project, we looked at mental office, different configurations of the residential, which needed to have some better likelihood of evenoculated to work, and ultimately landed on this solution that you're looking at now. And because of the fact that we're trying to get down as low as we can, the visual impact toward Grand Avenue is, is the least amount as possible. It's about two and a half stories, as you see from the street. We've articulated it to make it a, we believe, an attractive looking project. We're very excited to move it forward. There was a lot of back and forth with the conditions of approval, you know, kind of at the eleventh hour. There are a couple of items that we wanted to take a look at to see if there was some flexibility in those, and that would be, uh, street improvements and traffic item number nine, where it's requiring a new street light. We're wanting to see if that's actually a requirement or just a desire of the city, and to see if we can get some flexibility on that. As well as general condition number sixteen, which says existing chain link fence on the north and east parking lots, well, that's really kind of at the bottom of the property line. And I'm wondering if that's really necessary as we come up now where the, where the chain link fence is, that wall is going to start to go up quite dramatically. Do we really need to have a chain link fence there? So, those are the two items I have to answer. And then I'm here to answer any other questions we have. As you know, Gary Nguyen, the civil engineer, and I could possibly talk to him.
Thank you.
Uh, one quick question.
Yeah.
Being that there's not a whole lot of space where you're actually building this, what's going to be the impact on the street while you're building it, if, if you get along?
That's a good question. So, because the logistics of that is going to happen during grading, so Gary, would you want to comment on that in terms of keeping grading equipment off of the street while the vision goes on?
Okay. Sure, I heard the understood of what you were saying. Would you repeat the question if it's?
The, the site not being a, you don't have a whole lot of extra room on the site. So, during construction, what, what's going to be the impact of the actual street that, Mr. Japan even said is quite busy most of the time?
Or we have to have a detailed traffic control plan that I'm sure, or the local worst department, for controlling traffic. There are probably a few things to look at. I think you can see we've got quite a bit of work to build the site up, but I have the conditions there to take a look at the infrastructure before, that if we repair it, if we replace, that would be great, I guess. And it will be a tricky site to stage, so we have to work with the contractor and plant them and also contractors kind of do their job. But yeah, we are going to have to carefully stage and work with your staff. I mean, it, it is the best time.
How many yards of import to that? How many yards of import?
We're looking at about, what, forty-five hundred, forty-hundred yard strips. There's a lot, a lot of trips, maybe ten yard trucks, that's going to be about, you know, four hundred yard trips.
Mike Hotsky, Kansas.
Any questions on Michael Cuss? Any questions? I'll do my best to answer.
Is there any way going to be any kind of affordable housing, or is it just housing?
We have modesty, no roof, or anything other than the market area housing. We do make the cost of the wall, which we had after years since taking it this far, fees, construction costs on this day and age. As much as I would like perhaps that to be the case, it's economically not feasible for that, unfortunately, for this particular project.
Thank you. What's market rate right now for a two-two?
About two thousand, two, maybe two hundred. Ninety cents, two dollars a foot is kind of a market.
And across the street, is that what those are going for, both?
To the best of my knowledge, I haven't done a very comprehensive analysis, but, you know, looked at the comps sort of last, since the monster show, it doesn't doubt there's any, uh, you know, market.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is, by the way, I'm the owner of the property directly to the west of this proposal. I've lived here for approximately ten years with my family. I believe that red curb that was put in front of that property was at my request because of the danger involved in exiting my property whenever cars parked there to block the site in a very effective fashion and possible. I would be a proud grandfather. My daughter exits that property all the time, with my granddaughter as well. I do believe that this proposal will block that traffic site again. The street parking that's available for the apartments across the street is completely used up every single morning, every single evening. There is parking there a little today, but the proposal doesn't even have two parking spaces per unit. As you mentioned, visitors are going to have to park somewhere, as three apartments are already taxed. I agree with you, James, as far as the median is concerned. I've seen multiple accidents in front of my home. I just got into this three days ago, so I didn't have time to look at the site map. I just heard that there's a proposal for a stoplight to be put in there. I really would not like to have that as traffic stop in front of my house while I agree that it's a very dangerous hill. The additional foot traffic that people crossing Grand, trying to get to these new units, if they're leaving, coming on foot, would also be a danger because it's a blind hill basically on both sides. As you exit a proposed property, apartment building, especially in the evenings, especially in the summertime, you're going to be driving straight into the sun, and so the vision going west on that road during those hours is going to be greatly compromised as well. It's already a very narrow street. It doesn't allow very much leeway as far as traffic is concerned, and that's why I believe that you guys were correct enough to put in that red curb for me. For the half a mile of apartments across the street right into the south of me, every single one of them has a giant vacancy sign blazing for ten straight years now, so I don't believe the additional units are needed. Retaining wall that's been proposed, it's my understanding that Walmart's plan for Superstore was shot down because of, not mainly primarily, but one of the reasons was their proposal for retaining wall. The retaining wall sounds unattractive, and it presents another large canvas for graffiti that our beautiful cities played with at this point in time. So I don't really favor retaining wall either. I, I do think this will hurt the property values, and I do, on a daily basis, see my neighbors come out and take in that view. That view will be completely blocked, my view of the mountains. That is my castle, that's why I bought that one, and I don't want to see that view taken away from me or my neighbors. I do think that that site does present some building logistical problems for sure, and I, I never in my life thought anybody would build on it. In fact, I don't think that property in SPO's history has had anything built on it. And I can say that perhaps in the history of the planet, I don't think anything's built on that property, and I don't think this is the time for the project to build on it. I would like to see an open space or a heart for the people across the street to use. But primarily, the, I think the impact to my family would be a dangerous one in regards to the extra traffic, the blocking of the site lots for exiting my property, and then it would destroy what makes that property so lovely in the first instance of that view. So, I thank you for taking all this into consideration there. Here, would you have to say?
Thank you. That is last speaker's slip. Does anybody else wish to speak on this? We have a closed parliament hearing. Anybody?
I, I would, quite frankly, like to hear what my fellow commissioners have to say. I mean, I'll usually start off and give my opinion, and on this one, I'd kind of like to hear what everybody else has to say.
I'll go ahead. Unfortunately, I, I think it's a nice project. I've lived in Escanera for as long as I can remember, and I've looked at that piece of ground when I cruised Valley Parkway, about sixteen years old, and never thought anybody could get something accomplished. That wall isn't going to be too unattractive, looking from the Walmart parking lot as well. It's a segment retaining wall, in fact, so it's going to have stuff growing over it, and it will be a nice green screen going on there. I, my big concern was, is this thing going to have an elevator, and it does, and everybody here knows I'm stuck in elevators, so that's, but I, I think it's a nice project, and I understand commissioners' fans' concerns in regards to that traffic, and yes, the sun is blinding there in the summer, so I've driven that road a multitude of times, probably thousands. But it's a use, it fits in the use, and it's, it's a nice upgrade to the apartments, considering the apartments down the street are right across the way from Walmart, and people there have done their upgrades as well now. So I think it might be an attractive place for starting families to live at this point in time.
I'll make my comments. I, that is definitely a very difficult piece of property to develop. I drive by it four or five times a day. I think that I am sympathetic with losing the view, but you still are going to have a view out to the north. Sooner or later, there's going to be somebody built on this piece of property. I wish there was more parking for visitors with the trend right now to minimize parking because everybody's going to be riding their bicycles. I think that not too much we can do by. As far as the traffic on the street, the median is something that's needed, you know, for this project, so certainly not going to hold against this project, so I would, I would support it.
That is my favorite place to actually drive over, heading, it really is. I don't know why I'm going to get up to the top of the hill, but I look out, and it's like a big roller coaster. But, and I've always wondered about whatever happened with that, and I agree, it's, it's a great looking project. I think if you can keep it, keep it clean, keep it the way it's meant to be, it would be good as far as people storing stuff on balconies and people like that. And I, I agree with it. And again, I also agree that the retaining walls are, are not completely as high as were. And it's going to, it will be a nice addition to what right now is.
Just a small comment. I think that the retaining wall will be a big improvement on that rough slope, slope is, is cut respect to steep even in the name of all these, trying to be improved. To that, to that, all the way down to the, uh, hardy.
I'll go ahead.
No, it's okay. I, I looked at the project, and it looked nice, but very first question was, our bound was my concern. There's not even two spaces per unit. And I said, okay, there's some one-bedrooms, and that still doesn't mean that there would be a lot of students. I think that'll be an issue. It is a street that's not very wide, it's small, but overall, I think that this would be a good problem for.
You know, I, I agree with the, all the comments that my fellow commissioners have made. You know, this is a tough start to site. Something's going to get built there. Yeah, it, it's taken a very long time for something to go there, but something's going to go there. If it was an office building, it's probably going to be roughly the same size. If it was an office building, you know, you're going to have a lot more traffic than probably what this would generate. I am concerned about parking. I, I know that it meets the code for, for the units, but there are nowhere for the guests. And then, you know, if it happens to be that each one of these occupants has two vehicles, you know, that starts impacting the, the neighborhood. That was why my questions were coming up about the home street parking and where that red curb was, because I've gone up that hill, and I know it gets blinded, and I could see that somebody was, you know, that the gentleman that lives in the single-family at home there might have a problem getting out of his driveway. So I was happy to hear that that is, is actually a red curb all the way up. I don't have a concern with the retaining wall that's kind of down there in the, in the Walmart parking lot. That's who it impacts down there, and it'd be much better than what's there today. It's already steep slopes. This is full of weeds. So those are my comments, and I can support, support this project.
Do I hear a motion?
Sure, I'll move to approve PHD seventeen zero zero nineteen for the Grand Avenue apartment.
We have motion and second. All in favor?
We have a unanimous yes to approve the Master Precise Development Plan grading exemption, PHD seventeen oh oh one nine, along with adoption of the environmental determination prepared for the project.
Okay, moving on to G three. Again, does anybody have anything to disclose about this? Wireless Communication Facilities Regulations. Wireless communication facilities regulations.
Good evening, Commissioners, Chairman Span, Commissioners. Adam Feinstein, Principal Planner here, City of Escondido. Tonight, the item before you here is a request for an amendment to Article thirty-four of the Escondido zoning code related to wireless communication facilities. This amendment would be specifically particular to facilities in the public right-of-way. Just to kind of set the stage a little bit, back in twenty seventeen, in June, the City Council adopted an ordinance to amend the same code section here, the same article, to provide regulations for the first time for wireless communication facilities in the right-of-way. As part of that planning approval process, the Planning Division indicated that we had an intent to come back to look at this issue and revisit the idea of what regulations are necessary for wireless communication facilities in the right-of-way within about two years. And one of the other aspects of that twenty seventeen amendment, or excuse me, the twenty seventeen ordinance amendment, was to allow the city to prepare some guidelines for the implementation of wireless facilities in the right-of-way. At this point, those have not yet been adopted. Moving on a little bit, recently, we've had significant growth in the wireless industry, and we've seen a significant increase in the number of applications for wireless communication facilities in the right-of-way. At this point, within the last year or so, we've received approximately fifty requests, fifty applications, and that's as far as we're aware. It's probably just the tip of the iceberg. In September of twenty eighteen, the FCC issued a declaratory ruling and order that really is going to hamstring the city's local authority to put regulations on wireless communication facilities in the right-of-way. Small cell facilities, we'll get into what those are in just a minute, but our current ordinance as it sits does not give us much ability to address any wireless facility issues within the right-of-way in a way that would really protect our public health, safety, and interest here. So we're coming back with this proposed modification or amendment to the zoning code at this time in order to try to get ahead of that. So a small wireless facility, before we really get into the code language, a little bit about what that is. There's different terminology that's used sometimes. Some people call these small cells, small wireless facilities, micro cell sites, et cetera. All are kind of synonymous with the 5G deployment that everyone keeps hearing about, 5G this, 5G that. So the small cell facilities or small wireless facilities are really intended to bring that online. What they really are are smaller in size and provide smaller coverage area than wireless signal that would typically be found on a cell tower. They're lower in power usage, they are used for both capacity issues and coverage gaps, and you'll typically see them installed on light poles or power poles in the public right-of-way. For, as an example, just kind of visual reference, here's one that's a small wireless facility versus a kind of typical tower that you've seen. Obviously, these are a little bit different scale than some of them around here. And then, as far as a photographic example, one on the left here is your traditional macro cell tower, which sometimes you'll see like this. Usually, these days, they're not that obtrusive. You usually see them camouflaged or screened with a tree of sorts, puffball tree, or sometimes placed on, within a parapet of an existing building, things like that sorts. But they usually have these larger antenna panels, typically six-foot tall panels, and a number of them in an array facing usually three directions like you see here. A small cell facility, like the one on the right here, it's really intended to not be that visually obtrusive. It's got, in this one, a little antenna within the crown here of the street light pole, and then a couple of little boxes on there. You can see those. Those are the equipment that otherwise would be in the large enclosure on the macro site. So that's just a couple of little examples of what the difference between the two are. So the urgency of this proposed zoning code amendment is a result of the FCC order, which became effective last month on January fourteenth, I believe. A few of the major aspects of the order that affect jurisdictions, that affect our jurisdictions are related to timelines for review and limitations on aesthetic review and requirements. They are basically a timeline of a sixty-day shot clock for new, or, I'm sorry, for co-locations of a wireless facility, which is placing a new wireless facility or small wireless facility on an existing pole, or just putting in a new pole in that same spot to put the facility on, or ninety days for new facilities, which is just putting a brand-new light pole in an area that didn't have one before, or a brand-new structure of sorts, just to put, for the purpose of putting a pole on it. Limitations on aesthetic reviews and requirements, it requires that they be reasonably reasonable and technically feasible, that they be objective and published in advance, and that they be no more burdensome than those applied to other type of infrastructure deployments. So, for instance, equipment cabinets would need to be allowed in the same type of manner that you would see Cox or AT&amp;T equipment cabinet or normal utility services, or SDG E for that matter as well. There's other restrictions and regulations that are imposed on local jurisdictions by the ruling that really are intended to remove barriers for deployment of small wireless facilities in the right-of-way and hopefully speed up the implementation of that 5G deployment. So the amendment to Article thirty-four is intended to address the city's ability to comply with the order. Specifically, it would provide new definitions for wireless communication facilities, it would clarify the types of structures on which small wireless facilities can be placed, it removes a majority of development standards from within the ordinance, or from within the code here, the article, and then those will be placed in the guidelines. And then, probably most importantly, it will revise the permitting requirements for small wireless facilities. It'll create a new administrative process that will basically be a check the box, do you do, do you meet A, B, C, and D? Yep, all right, we'll give you a rubber stamp over the counter. Idea being that sixty days to take in any application, route them, especially with the quantity that we are anticipating of these, isn't much, so to find a way to do them administratively as quickly and expeditiously as possible is what we're looking for here, so the new code language would allow that. It also provides revised findings for approval of the facilities there. As I mentioned, the guidelines are going to be adopted and provided here for discussion, I think at the end, next month, I think March, we're going to bring them back. So they're currently under preparation. They would deal with the standards and criteria for development of, and deployment of new facilities, the height, the size, the location. They'd kind of prioritize locations, the types of structures they'd be put on, et cetera. And then the guidelines will also lay out the process that the city will go through in order to review them. It'll instruct an applicant that, all right, this is what you provide to engineering, this is what you provide to planning, et cetera, so that we can have this done as expeditiously as possible. So based on that, staff recommends that the Planning Commission provide a recommendation to the City Council to approve the proposed amendment to Article thirty-four, the Communications and Tenants Ordinance of the Escondido Zoning Code, specifically related to wireless communication facilities in the public right-of-way. Be happy to answer any questions the commission may have.
If you're going to bring this back to us, is this a finished revision now that we're going to vote on?
Sure, so the code amendment itself is as proposed. You're not going to, likely unless anything changes, we're not aware of, you're not going to see any changes to that language. The guidelines are adopted pursuant to the code, so that guidelines can be adopted at this point, changed in the future. They do not require ordinance, they can be adopted by resolution of City Council, so it's kind of a quicker, easier way to stay in line with and ahead of any changes in the wireless industry that would come about. The guidelines are kind of the implementation of the framework provided by the ordinance.
Is this going to eliminate the need for the bigger macro?
Not necessarily. I think we anticipate seeing a lot fewer of those. I think that kind of old 3G, 4G network is close to built out to the extent that it's necessary. This is kind of what we're hearing from the providers. I think the number I heard is that probably eighty percent of new facilities are going to be the small facilities. I would guess that for the next couple of years, that's going to be closer to ninety-five, ninety-eight percent of them, because they're going to really build that infrastructure. But once the main backbone of that infrastructure is built, it's probably going to balance back out, you're going to see about eighty percent of the new facilities from then forward being the small cells, and twenty percent still being the larger ones.
Last question. I know that people that have these big cells on their property did it because they're getting paid to do it. Will the city be paid, if this isn't a public right-of-way, to put it on our posts?
We will, but not to the extent that hypothetically we would have been able to prior to the FCC establishing their order. Their declaratory ruling limited what cities can charge in as far as lease rates for the equipment. That in addition, if a facility goes on an SDG E pole, or what's known as a strand mount, so it's on the wire between two telephone poles, the city does not get revenue on that. Thank you.
Is anybody else?
Have you seen an increase lately in this request for these sort of small facilities? I mean, is this happening now?
Yes, yes.
Okay, and has there been a significant increase? Or are we just anticipating that that's going to happen?
The order went into effect from the FCC on the fourteenth of January, and we've received about twenty-five or thirty of them since then.
Okay, and with this, it almost seems like we are not going to be able to look at this from an aesthetics standpoint beyond what we put in the guidelines, and it's got to be pretty narrow, is what it sounds like.
Correct, yes. The guidelines have to be very, very objective. It's not, there can't be any subjectivity to what we're looking at. It's going to be, okay, is it X, is it this specific size? Is it this distance from another facility? Is it mounted on this type of structure? And it's going to be a yes or no kind of thing. There's going to be preference, a kind of a preferred level or prioritized level of, it should be here, if it's not, you need to justify why not. Okay, then you can be on that second tier, or the second priority preference as far as what structure it would be mounted on. But the same thing with the equipment that's going to be going associated with it, you're going to have small boxes that would be mounted adjacent to the pole, or you're going to have ground mounted this. So there's lists, and there's justifications that an applicant would have to provide for why they can't do the most preferred, but yeah, there's not a lot of leeway in what we can or can't say that they can do.
Now, if you can go back to the two photos, so the one that's on the streetlight, it looks like it's got two square ring cylinders halfway up. I mean, is there the ability in the guidelines that we can say you can't have more than one, or you can't have more than five of these? I mean, what I would hate to see is, you know, ten of them lined up on a pole.
So the one ability we have is to say you cannot have equipment greater than twenty-eight cubic feet, so that's the size of a refrigerator. But our guidelines are going to discourage and kind of say, all right, go here first, go there first. And most of the providers aren't looking to put a refrigerator under a telephone pole, at least we sure as heck hope, hope not. But yeah, that's what the FCC regulation says, that they can hypothetically request that. We can still curtail that by saying you have to exhaust whatever other options are available first, and I think that there's definitely other options that we've seen that are available. One of the jurisdictions we've seen, they've said, in their guidelines, they said something to the effect of, if there's a deployment solution that has worked in a neighboring or another jurisdiction that is less obtrusive than what you're proposing here, you have to use that. So we're looking at putting language similar to that into our ordinances, or into our guidelines.
All right, thank you.
Just, there's a lot of bandwidth associated with putting all these micro cells around it. Is there going to be a lot of trenching and digging up the streets while they're doing this?
I'll defer to Owen, or Owen Tottle on that one.
Yeah, and we're still, that's going to be part of the guidelines on how we deal with that exactly. We're kind of trying to separate the fiber optic runs and the power runs that go to these, primarily the fiber optic runs, as separate review. Mostly, we just, we need to be able to verify that they're staying away from our utilities, that's our biggest concern.
Every time I watch them dig and trench and patch it in everywhere, it always falls apart.
Yeah, with our guidelines, you know, with recently paved streets, you know, we do have moratorium rules and, you know, that they'll have to abide by, and so they'll have to do, you know, you trenching a newly paved street, you'll do a lot more paving, like a whole lane width or more.
So each one of these unmounted will be for individual operators? Technically, they can have three poles in a row and have three different operators on them?
Technically, you could.
Or five, whatever that comes out to be.
Yeah, the code, currently, it has a separation requirement for any two facilities for the same provider that would be, I don't remember, maybe three hundred feet apart. That's going to be pulled out of the code, but similar language will be provided in the guidelines, but yeah, I mean, if you have a streetlight every hundred and fifty feet, you might see them on alternating streetlights.
Well, I'm okay with that, as long as every streetlight has one, I'd be okay with this having streetlights or telephone poles or something added, because I'm confused in regards to, can they add their own streetlights, say, we're putting a streetlight in here, based on what I want?
Sure, so they are allowed to install new, you know, new streetlights in locations that would be appropriate for streetlights. We can't just say, all right, I'm going to put six streetlights in the next fifty feet because I want to put wireless facilities on them. You know, we'd still have separation requirements that I'm sure through the engineering or standard drawings have certain distance separations between the streetlights. They could put one in where it would hypothetically need to be, or maybe there's some leeway in it, but not put six in in the next, you know, between myself and you. Right.
So then, can we, and things just pop up, I'm sorry. So can things then, can we then require them to put these in streetlights where we don't have streetlights? They said we want a pole, can we say you can do it, but you need to have the streetlight as well?
So the way that the code is going to read is that if, let me make sure I'm explaining this right, if they're putting anything on a new facility that's not a streetlight, they need to get a conditional use permit. So it's going to highly encourage them to do things that are only on existing facilities, or if they're a new facility, that it's a streetlight. So if they want to put one in a location, they can put up a streetlight, or they can go through a whole conditional use permit process to put up something else, so more than likely than not, they would go that streetway.
And then what is the distance between these that they need to have? What's that range, do you know?
So I've read somewhere independently of the research I've been doing for this, but they're anticipating, from what I've heard, every hundred yards in urbanized areas, that each carrier will need one of these things. That's, you know, and they might be, they might get smaller, they might become different, they might be mounted on the corner of a building, and not all within the right-of-way, but that's what I've heard, aside from this research, just on something else that I was looking at and reading an article, that they're going to need a ton of these things.
And they put them on private residences, if I agree?
Yeah, they would be something they could consider. I mean, the reason I think that we're going to begin the influx of them in the right-of-way is because there's already, there's infrastructure there that's ability, that's able to support it, and the FCC has kind of said, this is what it's going to be costing you, Mr. Carrier, to put a facility on a street pole. Private property owner can still charge what they're in charge.
Basically erase them, the gravel, the area.
Basically.
Okay, we have one person in the audience. Okay, we have one person in the audience that you wish to speak. No? Commissioners? We, our hands are pretty much tied as far as this is mandated by the FCC. We're just trusting the staff to, uh, descend to, uh...
Yeah, I, I think a lot of it will become a bit clearer when we bring, when we're able to bring the guidelines back to you. It'll kind of spell out more of the aesthetic, uh, details that we are gonna have some ability to, to dictate to an extent. So that should come back to you in March.
I'll move to, we move to accept AC nineteen, that's zero 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 one.
Okay, it's movement second. Is it all in favor? All right, we have unanimous, uh, asking the zoning code amendment, AC nineteen zero 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 one. Okay, we have no current business, uh, any oral communications in the audience? See none? Any comments?
I, I just had a question, maybe for Mr. Martin. Um, back in November, we approved the, uh, cycling centers modification. And one of the conditions was that they were to come back to us, the precise plan, it would be the ninety days. Just one of, what's that? Back into the city.
Yeah, so has that occurred to you now?
Yeah, so we've, we've gone through at least one plan check of that grading plan. And they're, they're working with their neighbor, Superior Rating makes, uh, some very new issues as well.
Can I make a request that you email me your actual presentations prior to the day of the meeting?
You can, but sometimes it's not ready till an hour prior to the meeting.
If it's mine, it's within minutes of the meeting.
Okay. And, and just sometimes there's things that are graphically that I just can't figure out. Everyone says the presentation makes sense, but it would make it easier for us to get it on.
Okay. During the meeting?